The Board will now convene to open meeting.
Can't hear you.
Certification of closed meeting, whereas the Akamak County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative record vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.1-3771D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be resolved that Akamak County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which a closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. May I ask the clerk to move?
Mr. Spadell?
Present.
Mr. Taylor?
Present.
Dr. Johnson?
Present.
Mr. Dale?
Here.
Mr. Handel?
Here.
Mr. Whipper?
Here.
Mr. Turner?
Here.
Mr. Bowman?
Here.
Mr. White?
Present.
Mr. Taylor?
Present.
Dr. Jaggie?
Dr. Smith?
Can we please stand and pledge a flag?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the February 1st, 2018 minutes?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the meeting minutes from the 2004, 2025, excuse me, '02, '04, 2025 meeting and the '02, 18, 2025 meeting.
Second. There is a motion in a second to approve the minutes for the last two meetings. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion on case, readmission case, '03, '04, 25, '01?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the readmission case as presented for '03, '04, 25, '01.
Second. There is a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there a motion on '03, '04, 25, '02?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve as presented on case number '03, '04, 25, '02, readmission case.
Second. Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there a motion for the long-term suspension, '03, '04, 25, '04?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve as recommended for the case '03, '04, 25-04.
Second. Motion in a second to approve the long-term suspension. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there a motion for the expulsion, '03, '04, 25, '05?
Madam Chair, I move that we, as we recommended, approve the expulsion for case number '03, '04, 25-05.
Second. Next up is a block. Sorry. There is a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Two oppositions. Next up, there is a block of first reading policies. You all can look at those if you have any questions. Contact the appropriate staff member if they have known those in the next meeting, which is on 25. And next up is the school report.
Good evening. On behalf of Principal Miss Kimberly Giddens, Assistant Principal Miss Seuss, and myself, Mr. McGregor, Assistant Principal, we welcome you to Nandua High School. Tonight, we have some students, parents, and teachers to present some information and some accolades from Nandua High School to all of you. Now, I'll introduce our student representatives, Bazing Court Paws and Rihanna Taylor.
First of all, I would like to talk about FBLA events going on in our school. Thanks to our sponsors, Mrs. Wong and Mr. West, we have been improving each year. Last year, we actually won one award in the FBLA competitions. However, this year, as we can see, we won three. Leila Brown won first place with insurance and risk management. Rihanna Taylor won second place with public policy and advocacy. And Arv Roltz and Rustine won third place with securities and investments.
So, moving on to our trades, our welding for Skills USA, our district Skills USA welding competition, Lev Montalvo won third place, and Kalar Vasquez, and with Team Fabrication, Travis Ayers also won third place. So, moving on to our cheer squad, our cheer squad took our 2A regional champions. And our cheer squad also competed in the state competition and successfully won fourth place.
Next up is our swim team, boys 2A regional champions and the girls 2A regional runner-up. Top five finishers from the girls, 200-yard medley relay, fifth place, 200-yard free relay, fifth place, Mia Sharnock, Sarah Bentley, Lexi Mae Thorne, and Chloe Bachi. Individual events, Sarah Bentley, 100 breast, second place, and 200 IM, third place. The top, the top five finishers for boys, 200-yard medley relay, fourth place, 200-yard free relay, third place, Zach Smith, Camden Lewis, Lucas Calvetti, and Austin Wirt. Individual events, 100 freestyle, fifth place by Austin Wirt, 500 freestyle, fourth place by Camden Lewis.
And continuing with our all-state swim team, Sarah Bentley competed in the 200 individual medley and the 100 breast stroke. Zach Smith, Camden Lewis, Lucas Calvetti, and Austin Wirt competed in the 200-yard free relay. So, our Nandua High School wrestling team, Dylan Patnitt, he is our state champion and our regional runner-up for the 2A district.
And then Arnold Rustine, he was our state runner-up slash regional champion. And then our girls are also progressing by Dulce Perez Vicente. She was a state qualifier and her overall record was 40 to 16.
So, now we are going to talk to you about student concerns and what the students feel we should address to the school board. Chromebooks have been a rising problem. The library is full of people asking for Chromebooks every day, Chromebook chargers. The Chromebooks just don't seem to be lasting as long as they should, or they get misplaced and the IT department takes a long time to replace them. So, I feel that this should be addressed to the school board and we really appreciate it if y'all could address this concern.
And this concern is actually for our upcoming class because I do not know if you guys are, you guys know, however, next year, everything will be test, there will not be a test optional for universities and it will actually be required to submit an SAT score. However, most schools have a SAT prep course offered in their schools. However, our school, our schools, ACPS lacks this. And I believe we can do way better and improve our students if we offer a SAT course, whether this is out of school or it can be in elective class. I believe we can get great results from our students because they have great intellectual, they have great extracurriculars. However, one negative ruins it all. And we want a perfect, we want to see a perfect paper when we turn it, turn it into universities. Therefore, I would highly recommend an SAT course because that was something I lacked this year. And I believe that it was, it prevented me from getting into one of my dream schools. So, thank you.
Our teacher representative, Ms. Chelsea Britigum.
Good evening. Can you all hear me? My phone doesn't work quite too well. My name's Chelsea Britigum. Like Ms. Giddens said, I am the beta sponsor here at the high school. And this is my third year as a beta sponsor. And this year, we traveled to state convention in Hampton Roads, February 7th, 8th. And we took, what did we take? 24, I think, or 24 to 26 students. And 13 of those students so have qualified for national conventions. The previous, these are, these are our students who qualified. And you can see their place. And we had a lot of first place and second place. And we had some third place. We had amazing projects these students did. They were so creative. I was very, very impressed with the quality of projects that they were able to produce and submit for competition. So, our national convention for beta this year is taking place in June, June 22nd to the 26th. And it is going to be held in Orlando. So, we are very, very motivated to participate and attend. We have already started the monumental task of fundraising. The past Friday, we had a spaghetti dinner. And we did, we did pretty good for our first fundraiser. So, we do have a lot more upcoming fundraisers that we are looking to sponsor and hold. And we just are very excited. And the kids are so motivated to go. They are all excited to go to Disney and all excited to go to Universal. And we are just working, they're working so hard to get the money raised for, to be able to go. And it is, it is really neat to watch them be so motivated and taking, taking initiative to come up with fundraising ideas and to get other students in the school involved. We're holding a tournament this Friday during fourth block. So, students are gonna, we've had 16 students sign up already. It's just day one. So, we are looking forward to getting that the rest of the week. And what can I say about beta? We're doing, we're doing great. I'm very proud of my students and they're, they're a lot of fun to work with. And thank you very much for your support with everything that we're doing.
And if someone wanted to make a donation, they would, how would they do that?
Yes. Donations, you can contact me. My email is Chelsea.Britigum@akamak.k12.vws. And I can give you some more information about that. We would love to have monetary donations. Or we are also collecting baskets and gift certificates. In April, we are sponsoring a bingo silent auction at the Railway Museum in Park Slope. And so, we are in the process of gathering some baskets and gift certificates for that event as well. And I've already gotten a few. So, I'm very excited. They're very adorable. I just picked up this beautiful hand-painted piggy bank today. And it is just precious. So, we are very much looking forward to that as well. So, come out and support us if you're, if you're available, April 17th. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're also gonna have GoFan. What we are using GoFan this year, we're gonna have a QR code set up that we have to send out for that too, for the donations. Yep. Next up, we will have, my coach voice went and I forgot I have to speak into this. Next up, we're gonna have Ms. Camby Smith, who has four Nandua students. Class of 2023, Zoe, 25, Zach, Zenas 27, and Zion is 30. Ms. Camby Smith.
Good evening. Thank you so much. I'm not from around here. I'm actually, I hail from Kansas City. So, I come with a little bit of different spice here, and I love it. You guys have welcomed us in with open arms. We came in during the pandemic when everybody was masked up and nobody could talk to anybody. And yet, you all still opened up your arms and welcomed us in to your community as family. So, thank you. I have had the privilege to feed the football team for the last four years. And my mommy heart is kind of grieving that time with those children. You know, we say it takes a village to raise a child. But are we willing to let that village help us raise our children when it comes to disciplining them, when it comes to correcting them, when it comes to sitting down and breaking bread with them? I have had the privilege to have the football team for the last four years sit down and break bread with me every Saturday after a football game. My husband and I have opened up our home to the boys to let them have a safe place. When school is out, we open up our home. We had bonfires. We let the kids be obnoxious, but boys, and let them have fun. It has been an honor and a privilege to watch these young men change and grow. I actually had a parent, my son's freshman year, had a senior take my son at Earth's wing. And he's a police officer now. His father came up to me and said, "Thank you. It was because of you and your husband gave my son a safe place. Now he can go out and protect the streets." Because he knew that there was an option out there. So, it takes us as a community to just dive in and love on these children because they need it. I'm also one of those parents that will get back here, hold that door open for that lady, for that gentleman. I hold him accountable. I had a young man a couple of years ago that got into some trouble. Saw him at Walmart and I called his name. He's 6'5", I'm 4'11". He calmed down in my arms and broke down. He said, "Why do you care? It's because you're a human being." You know, it takes a lot less to train a child in the way they should go than to fix a broken adult. And that's our mission, is to help fix these children so that society doesn't have to, so they can see there's goodness out there, they can feel the love in the community. And that they're not gonna just wanna go off and spread their wings and leave, but they're gonna wanna take care of those of us that stay here and call this place home and that love this community. Sometimes it takes things that don't look like they should be right for somebody to come along and say, "You know what? I'm gonna change that." We haven't had a trainer for the athletics here, and that's been very difficult. But you know what? My son said, "I'm gonna go into kinesiology and I'm gonna come back and I wanna train." So that when he had to pick up his best friend who had a knee injury, it wasn't on his back, but it could be on the trainers. Because I, we forget, those are impacting their lives forever, those injuries. And we have to remember that we're the adults and we gotta make sure that they are not impacted incorrectly, but we are impacting them in the right way, getting them ready for success. I wanna back up these two young ladies for taking the time to say, "Hey, my fellows have told me these are the things we need." And as a parent, they need it. I have four kids that have gone through Chromebooks. They are terrible. Most people will sit there and, "Oh, they're okay." No, they're terrible. Kids steal chargers all the time. Kids damage other people's property. They're terrible. There has to be some balance and checks and some accountability, yes. But it also starts with all of us. We can do better for this community and let these children know they are worth this investment. We're, they are worth the SAT investment so they can get into their dream school and not get deferred. These kids are worth it. They are the future. They're the ones that are gonna be taking care of us. So, we need to take care of them right now. So, thank you for opening up your hearts to us. And I've opened up my hearts to you all. And I love this community. Nandua has been awesome. I've gotten to go on field trips with Ms. Britigum because she was like, "Yes, I need, I need a parent chaperone." My daughter was like, "My mom will go." I'm like, "You better believe it. I'm gonna go to what? I'm gonna on a field trip with the kids?" I mean, that's a highlight of a mom's heart when your children want to spend time with you, especially at the awkward ages of high schoolers. My kids are my heart. But you know what also is? Everybody else's child. We say no child left behind, but do we mean it? Do we really mean when we say it takes a village? So, let's not let our village down. Let's put all of our resources. Let's lay our egos down and let, put our resources to the best of our abilities so that they can have the best success. I actually just went to my oldest daughter's Navy graduation a week ago. Never thought that day would come. I had let her fall and figured some things out. But when she said she was gonna make this decision, I was like, "Let's go. Let's find out. Let's get all the information." I gave her the tools as much as I could and let her make those decisions. Yes, I let her fail. Yes, I let her do some things. But you know what? She did. She succeeded. She had the tools at her fingertips and she succeeded. What a proud moment that was, to see my daughter ready to fight for and serve our country. Thank you guys for this opportunity. Thank you for your love and support. And I look forward to meeting with y'all more soon. Thank you.
Mr. McGregor bought, well, I'll talk about some of the fun things that we're doing to our test scores. But Mr. McGregor bought this from, he's a northerner. So, he bought it from up north. We have our first annual powder puff game with our junior and senior girls. It was freezing out there. Did not face this guy. We went through it. The girls went through it. Great thing. Looking to expand, maybe do it with the other schools moving forward. But we did do it. It was a terrible weather day for me, but.
It was terrible.
It was so fun.
It was not, not so.
It was fun. All right. So, our homecoming spirit week, just a couple pictures from that. We had Camo or Bougie and Bling Day, a couple of our sophomores, and Mr. Gillespie, our new English teacher. This was anything but a backpack day. As you can see, the kids were very creative. The most creative thing I saw, someone had bought a dresser drawer in. I would never have thought to do that. But we have a basket there. We have a wheelbarrow. We have a handcart. That is one of our Badger students carrying a radiator. But it wasn't a backpack, so he was good. All right? There's our Deputy Poole. She participated in every one of our school spirit week events while we're meeting and using. So, thank you to Deputy Poole and Akamak County Sheriff's Department for everything they do. So, then we walked them one day dressed like this. This is all teachers. Dressed like this one day, they're looking at us. And we were dress code violating and everything. We would have thought that we had lost our minds. They didn't know what was going on. Underground Spirit Week, we did things where the staff knew, but the kids were like, "What's going on?" So, I think that was the most fun they had. We had the dress like kids. That's Mr. Lawrence with his hoodie on with his headphones. Mr. Williams is wearing a jersey that looked just like his son. He was a junior here. Back to some more academic things, though. We have something called the regional program here where all the self-contained students in the county come here every day. This is from 14 up to postgrads. So, they'll stay here until they're 22. We have two classes that are on our main hall where the students are taught life skills. They go to different, on different trips and everything to try to get them the life skills. We have a life skills room where it has the washer dryer, all those things that they need, the essentials. Now, in additions to that, Ms. Bell and Ms. Johnson, Ms. Purvis, our teachers, do such a great job with these kids. We have a coffee cart where they go around and learn the social skills. They're going around and interacting. It's not Ms. Bell and, you know, them doing the work. The kids are having to use their social skills, which they're not always gonna have an opportunity to do otherwise. But she's, they're doing a great job with the regional program and they feed us well every month. We get breakfast, pay for it, fundraises for the class, breakfast and lunch each month. All right? No cell phones, no problem. Started it out at the beginning of the school year. And what we did was we put games in the cafeteria. They have to have something to do. It's much louder now. But you see, there's a student right there playing chess against our quantitative reasoning calculus teacher. So, they're playing chess. They're playing huge Uno. They're doing all of those things. They're interacting. So, the cell phones have kind of, it was an adjustment, but they found other things to do, like talk to us the entire time. So, when they don't have their cell phones, I usually, I don't know where my cell phone is now. I usually kind of just leave mine around because I have to have mine on me. It's locked, but you can always get to the picture, the camera. So, this is what happens when I leave my phone out. That's my first day OSS. You can see, Ms. McGregor and I look very happy. That is Corporal Jason Campbell, who also likes to take my phone and do the same thing. So, I'm trying to do better. I have a thing hanging on my wrist. It's not there now. But they're not having a hard time with the cell phone. They work first and you'll get every now and then. But they're really engaging with each other instead. All right? And the SOE scores, that's from '23, '24. As you can see, our algebra, English, biology scores are stellar. We are going towards that now with the, we've only had, I think, 19 students. We're at 90% for our algebra now because they haven't gotten through the part two. Once we took it the first semester, we're at 90% now. So, the same thing we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions?
I'm sorry. Does anyone have any questions?
Ms. Giddens? Thank you. That's nice. Very nice.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Jason Campbell. Item 71. Mr. Campbell is gonna give us a summary for the, the school resource officers corporal semester.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Campbell. First of all, thank everybody for the opportunity to come here and speak to you all tonight. Kind of let you know what we have been doing on our end. When I'm not taking pictures of myself on this given these phones, we do get a lot done. It was just super exciting. I do want to kind of lead with what we have done in the enforcement side. And then we're gonna switch over to the other things that we've been able to accomplish this year so far. We have only, and this is Akamak and Shaky City Police Department, had any kind of legal action against two students this year, which I think is down from previous years. And I think there's a lot of reasons why that's happening. But it's been a very nice change. We hope to continue that and that we can continue to decrease those numbers year to year. So, minus the legal action, we have been getting a lot done. So minus the legal action, we have been getting a lot done. We recently conducted active shooter training for all the school SSOs. Lieutenant Taylor and Corporal Barnes completed that over at Handel Middle School, which was sorely needed. We have completed Narcan Training for all of the school nurses, school administrators, and medical designees across the county. I was able to actually finish that up last week, or sorry, this week over on Kanjin Island, which was a nice trip. When I was teaching there. Both Akamak and Shinkate officers have been involved in school dances and sports activities all year. And one of the things that I wanted to address and point out on a positive side is the Central Office recently completed a new triage system for threat assessments. There was a time when we were doing them for every kindergarten that had a bad day. And they really did a lot of work and put some stuff together through the Department of Criminal Justice Services, and I'm sure like the DOE, but to reduce the amount that we were doing. So we're still doing the threat assessments that need to happen, but we're reducing a lot of the ones that were necessary. And I'll just point out Akamak Elementary School, last week we did one. And I will tell you, it was probably the best assessment I've ever seen. Between Mrs. Wheeler, Mrs. Haney, and the mother of the child, everybody on the same page. It was very good to see good teamwork in that community for the best interest of the child, not a punitive step, right? It was about keeping people safe. I reached out to all the SROs and kind of asked them what they were doing outside the norm of their job. And I know Deputy Poole is here. Fernanda Dua spends a lot of time in this building outside of just working the school events and like the games. Recently, I know, I believe she was here for the spaghetti dinner with Beta. So she has to take a lot of time out of her own to participate with the kids and to be there for them when they are needed. Deputy Shreets at Shinkate, oh sorry, I corrected myself, at Arcadia is a wrestling coach. Genome at, oh, Shinkate Elementary School is now the, one of the varsity football coaches for the high school. And on my end, I had a really cooperative to read for Scholastic Bowl last moment this year at Nandua. Besides realizing that I can't pronounce the words the high school kids know, it was a really, really good experience. And Dare is winding up well. We've completed the first half of the schools and we're well underway for second semester. So Dare Day's coming, which is my big exciting event of the year. But so far this year has been highly successful. I believe one of the biggest changes that has made that possible is the illegality of cell phones in the building. We've seen a serious reduction in fights and school incidences since the kids don't have access to social media each other 24/7 while we're here. So we've appreciated and enjoyed that. I think that's caused a lot of good benefit, so. If you have any questions, I'd love to answer them. Otherwise, they'll get added here. I hope that was three minutes.
Thank you very much. We appreciate everything you do. I haven't heard any problems with any of the, our MOU, so I'm assuming all that is going very smoothly now.
We're having a great year.
That's great, glad to hear that. That's all good. And we just appreciate very much everything you all do to keep all of our children safe. Thank you very much.
Thank you all so much. We're here for you.
Item seven point oh-two, carryforward expenditure.
Good evening. Sorry on some of your topics, but. Well, you should have this on your, on your iPads as well. I don't know if you can see it or not. If you have it on your iPad, it's pretty good. So I just wanted to bring this forward and, and say that this is just a first blush that we're bringing to you. And what we would like to see is that you ask to schedule a public hearing for the next, we need to get public input as well. Because this will be a budget amendment for our next year's budget. And so we need to go to a public hearing, and then you will need to approve the final thing. So the first slide that I have, actually I took from the county, and it shows what our carryforward was on each year beginning in June of 2018. We used to have, and we still do have, an agreement with the county that we're allowed to carry over 1.25%, which is just under a million dollars. They allow us to encumber funds and POs. But beginning in eighteen, when things started to heat up about the discussion of a school board office and the renter, they kind of like gave us waivers on that so that we could begin to save money so that we could fund that or the most part of it, seventy-five percent ourselves. So that first graphic shows how much it is for each year. And then the next graphic shows what it is cumulative. So in, in talking with Dr. Jack previously, you know, he wanted to have us basically provide a carryover, carryforward it in two, three areas. One for one-time purchases, one to start saving for, for things like the gym and things that we're trying to fund, and then a contingency aspect. If you also remember, we do like to save some of our carryover from the current year for unfilled positions. I think this year we put thirty-five percent of that back into our budget because there are certain positions out there that we're just not able to fill. On the next slide, and there's no totals on this because this is something that the board is gonna get input and the public is gonna get input. So this is a balance to the T because we wanna save some back for contingency, and we wanna save some back for, for future projects. So these are not set in stone. This is for your consideration. So can you back up on this, Greta? We have left the Akamak Primary School renovation at seven and a half million. If you remember, the county's gonna contribute two and a half million. We are coming in even with a contingency that Mr. Bennett, can you hear me? Even with the contingency that Mr. Bennett built, built in, we are coming in under, just, just under ten million. So when speaking with him today, previously when we talked about carryforward, we did not believe we would get the very competitive bid that we did receive and that you all have awarded. So we feel more comfortable now with not putting in a huge amount for contingency on that and to leave it at seven and a half million. The remaining two projects are underway as far as the design goes, and these are the best cost estimates for that. These projects have been discussed for quite some time now, but they are still underway. We have completed, I believe, the sixty-five percent review, and we're trying to get the hundred percent. I think we're nearing completion on that. And then the next step will be drawing out for bid. But this board has previously approved those projects. They originated from over two million dollars worth of funds that the county gave us, not the county, the state gave us for school construction funds. And we were looking at what we thought could be two gyms that we could do with those funds, and it turns out we could only do one. So really one of them is being spent for school construction, which the county has placed in our carryover. So the school construction, where we did spend it, but we're allowed to, to have years to spend it, that's part of the carryover. I'd also like to explain that a big part of the carryover is our all in Virginia money. That was over two million dollars, and that's gonna be spent in this year and next year. So there's money in carryover that we don't wanna allocate because it's already been budgeted for all of Virginia. So those are those projects. On the next page, I just put the capital improvement plan. This was presented in our budget presentations, and it's just FY twenty-six year, which totals just over a million dollars. You all saw the capital improvement plan, I believe, back in November, December, and then again in the budget presentation. So this is just taking that first column for FY twenty-six and funding it out of carryforward. These are the projects that we also discussed during our budget presentations that were taken directly from the budget requests submitted by directors, coordinators, and building level principals. We do not yet have the price on the con, or an estimate on the concrete order around the track for Arcadia High School. But Mr. Bennett is meeting with a contractor this week, so we hope to have one by the end of this week. When we do, I'll, I'll update the, the power point. But all of these items, except for history textbooks, you've seen in a budget presentation. History textbooks have not yet been chosen, and the list has not yet been distributed by the state. But it is up for renewal, so we wanted to reserve funds to pay for that. Other considerations, we've ordered a specially equipped bus to transport Rivermont students. We still have not received that. So I put it in carryforward in case it does not come in until after June thirtieth. It's a possibility that it will come in before that. We're kind of hoping because it's been ordered since the summer. We've discussed retention and sign-on bonuses. The figure that you see there is to do what we did last year. Two thousand dollars retention, a thousand dollars sign-on. I know there's been discussion, and this board might want to get in this too, about possibly having a higher sign-on bonus for say a harder staff position, such as maybe special education teachers. But that's still, I can adjust the number based on what this board decides they would like to see us, us get in retention and in sign-on bonuses. Shinkate Gym, we brought that up during, as enough consideration through the budget process. Mr. Bennett put in a estimate of two point nine up there. Shinkate Elementary is the only school that does not have a gym after we complete this at Poncatag. The unknown on that is the soil conditions. So that's a tentative figure, but there is an unknown on that. And I did watch the print up there that I had previously taken thirty-five percent of the unfilled position and put that in the current year budget. We talked about that during the budget process as well. So that's what I have, is proposals. We'll accept other ideas. You know, if staff has ideas, the public will have a chance to speak. If this board directs us to have a public hearing at the March twenty-fifth meeting, we currently looked up the code today. You can approve it immediately after the public hearing, or you can discuss it and do it at a future meeting. We just kind of really wanted to get the retention sign-on bonuses out there because we felt that would be a good hiring tool for Mr. Johnson and Ms. Evans and Ms. Ferguson and all the others that are going to these recruitment affairs. So we kind of wanted to get that out there in hopes that we could give him, give him a little bit more ammunition to hopefully attract some, some talent to our school. So that was one of the reasons, because this will be for the FY twenty-six year. But that was one of the reasons we wanted to bring it to you and get this process started so maybe it would benefit in our, our recruitment efforts. Are there any questions?
Anybody have a question?
I have one question. It seems to me we started taking the Rivermont children on a yellow school bus, and that did not work. So then we bought, did we buy like a Traverse or something?
So we're back on the yellow school bus. I'm sorry, we are back on the yellow school bus.
And, but did we not buy cars?
We did buy, we did, we still use cars in the county to transport, say, homeless. We have a homeless Traverse, but I think we have two or three Traverses.
And, and then we bought the short buses, we bought the.
The activity buses.
We bought several of those, and now we need a fourth type of vehicle?
This is in between the size of a regular bus and an activity bus. The activity buses are not big enough to have, to transport the students and the bus assistants. Because we have a number of bus offices.
Would it be possible to see how this bus is specially equipped and how it is different from a yellow school bus?
It's a yellow school bus. It's just not as big as the other eighty-eight yellow school buses. So we're hoping it will do better on gas and that type of thing.
So will you be able to show us some kind of, some pictures or some kind of detailed information about this?
Sure, I'll get that. Sorry, I can't see when we talk in this. Yes, I'll, I'll get that for you and, and send it out in an email if that's okay.
Thank you.
I have a question on that. Is there a big price difference between the regular yellow school bus and the shorter yellow school bus?
A full-size bus is less expensive.
A full, this, this has extra equipment in it? So I'll, I'll get the details. We discussed this a while back, and I don't recall the details.
Okay, we'll discuss it. Thank you.
This is not the activity bus that carries everything below?
No, this is not an activity bus. The activity, no, this is not an activity bus. This is a bigger sized bus.
Yeah, everything goes on the below.
We do have, don't we, the big school, I know some schools have the bus, so the football equipment, you want to use that as well?
Yeah, I don't, I, I'll get the details for it.
Okay.
No one else has questions? Thank you, Ms. Allen. Did you want to talk about that?
Yes, I'm sorry.
I'm having trouble seeing that screen from over here.
Okay, to talk about the SROs. The funding, Mr. Campbell said all the good things that are do good about the funding of the SROs. So the proposal is that Akamak County Public Schools would pay approximately a hundred and four thousand dollars, and we will be having seven total SROs. The Shinkate grant that they funded two SROs with the past at least three years, I think it is, is expiring. So of the, of, it costs us approximately a hundred and four thousand dollars for seven SROs. Three SROs will be assigned to the high schools, including the Shinkate SRO, and the other four will be rovers. One of the seven will be managed by the Shinkate Police Department, and the other six will be directly under the control of the sheriff. If you convert a twelve-month SRO position FTE to a ten-month, which is what it would be for us, it would cost us appro, the cost of an SRO for a school is approximately sixty-nine thousand. So at a hundred and three, a hundred and four thousand, that means we're paying for approximately one and a half FTEs out of the total seven from the schools. The rest is being funded by, by the county. There would be an agreement that, let's just say the cost was a hundred thousand even, and we have, we currently do have three SROs in place of this. So let's say we get additional one, we have four SROs, and let's say it's an even a hundred thousand dollars for math purposes. We would be billed four sevenths of the hundred thousand dollars so that we're not going to be paying the full hundred thousand dollars, but only having four of the seven positions filled. So there would be some sort of memorandum of understanding that we will pay that hundred thousand in the same pirata share as their staff. So I know that this is the county's proposal. I know that they feel very, very strongly about it. We do have ways that we can look at in funding this, but they are looking for, for a motion and a vote as possible. That was my understanding.
So I had a, I had a question. What did you say about the Shinkate Elementary School SRO?
You'll be able to keep it.
No, we're keeping one. We're keeping one Shinkate SRO. That's my understanding, because we'll have three at the three high schools, and we'll have four more. So total seven. One of those will be the Shinkate SRO, one of the three high schools. So the other four will be roving between every other school, the middle and elementary school except for teenage year.
Awesome. Thank you for that information.
I think Shinkate has been on this proposal, and Representative, Mr. Carr has been in on this proposal, and the board of directors. I think this is their, their, and of course our, our sheriff's. This, I believe, is the county's compromise on how they handle this. It's my understanding that the county will pay Shinkate monthly for their cost of their SRO that's in our hospital over there. And so we won't be paying Shinkate, and we'll be paying the county.
Would anyone want to make a motion that we accept the super tent's recommendation to commit a hundred thousand dollars towards the county's SRO?
Now, Chair, I believe that we accept the super tent's recommendation for the SRO.
To commit a hundred thousand dollars.
Commit to a hundred thousand dollars. Clear?
There is a motion and a second. Are there questions?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And Van Ness? Thank you, Ms. Allen. Okay, next up, the superintendent's report. I will, I can address this just briefly, but there's some concerns at the staff, at the school level, about the staff doing backpack searches. And I think it would be helpful if we had a small committee to discuss this and come up with some recommendations and bring it back to the board. And whoever is on the committee, if y'all would let me contact you later. I don't see this as an ongoing thing. Maybe we do two times, three at the most. And we just make some recommendations and then go from there. But just let me know after the meeting if you're interested in serving on that committee. It involves the backpacks and the metal detectors and the people that have to do the backpack checks. Mr. Spidey, do you have any remarks?
Yes, I would. I wanted to thank Nandua for the presentation and congratulate the school on all their achievements. Particularly the annual recipe, who won the state championship as point two. And I think that we need SAT prep test classes in all of our schools. That's something that we can look into and maybe get them. Although we're happy about SRO not being in every school. Maybe your SROs can train any of our kids, you know, safe as well as the road.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Ms. Butler?
Just thank you all for having this presentation today of the principal and the students and the chair.
I'm grateful too for tonight, for the presentations and for all the students who won at the state level and to those who are going to the national convention. I did ask before we started the meeting that Ms. couldn't reach out to all of us with information about the fundraising that they're having and that we would seriously consider helping the students get to the national convention this summer. I am concerned about the school situation in terms of security. The SROs are going to be great, but I also think we really need to consider probably some SSOs as well. And I'm not sure who I need to talk to. This is Mr. Johnson, or you can talk to Mr. Johnson. Do we have a policy on PTO, like how much you can take? Or can you take as much as you've earned? And do the SSOs get benefits like that? Or are they wage earners?
I can, I can, I can email with you.
They get the same.
Can you make a progress?
I think what we're saying is they get the same benefits as everyone else.
As a 10-month employee.
As a 10-month employee. But I'm sure all of that is in there, isn't that in there? When people come to work, they don't get some information about a little bit.
Yeah, we let them know.
That's not my issue. My issue is how much time? Because I'm getting reports from the different schools that so-and-so didn't come to work today. Is our school protected? It's only one SSO here. So that needs to be, I'm going to stay in my lane, but that needs to be held.
Hello, hi. Good evening, you all. What's going on at some of the schools? Because we only have one person, we have a lot that are out due to illness. I have one that is out still. He contacted me this evening. And so we don't have any to rotate in and out to sub for them because of the training that they have to have. So earlier I did make mention of that I had requested maybe six, no, I had asked for seven more. When they're not there, I've pulled from different schools to make sure some schools have someone just to make sure everyone is covered, but we're short because children have been sick, they've been sick. And therefore there are some times where some of them are out and it's been rough. This last month is really rough. And we don't have anyone that is trained to come in and help what they need to do.
How reasonable is it for, how reasonable is it to train, I guess, bus drivers and paraprofessionals and/or even the custodians staff to do backpack checks instead of pulling away from our full-time people?
So I don't think it would be too hard of the training. I don't think they know what, the concern seems to be that they don't know what they're looking for. And some of them are reluctant to look in bags, even though I suggested earlier before the SSOs, we were still checking bags, to use gloves. So even if we have everyone come in and try to help, will they be, you know, will they be willing to do it? The training was not good. Our SSOs got trained through DCJS, so they can do searches and stuff kind of thoroughly, even though that's inconsistent at some of the schools. So I don't know if it'd be that much of asking up others to do that part in the morning. Just to get the students in at a time, man. That's the main thing we're trying to do is trying to get everybody in in the mornings without so much of the lines and volume to get the kids in.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Not only, thank you, Ms. Jordan, Madam Marcus, just thank you to Nandua. And it's really, it's been a very nice evening. Mr. Taylor?
How would I do, other board members, regarding the Nandua presentation? We were great. I really enjoyed the Cane's presentation. I agree with you 100%. And I hope you have more and more parents want to get involved. You know, there are a lot, but we need more because our kids need us and they need our support. I do want to thank Dr. Jack for his time when he was here and giving us, I think we were down positively. And I look forward to our future and what we're going to be doing, what we become as Akamak County.
Again, I'd like to say thank you, Nandua, for all the presentations and the meal. Also, made a love. I say right now, I would donate $100 to you to help you on your trip. It's coming out of my pocket. And my goal is always to give the kids. Thank you.
Just to say, thank you, Nandua High School for the hospitality. Thanks for having me there.
Mr. Neil?
Last but again, it's best, as again, thank you, Nandua. Congratulations all of you for their awards and accomplishments. I think Mr. Spidey said, yeah, SAT prep when I was in high school. We're not going to tell you what year it was, but I remember we would go home and actually come back to school. It was after after school. I don't know how they got the teachers to do it and what everybody was offering even way back when I went to school. And it was very helpful when I took the SATs. I just chose a different route with the Air Force instead. But it was very helpful. And again, thank you, everybody. Thank you, Ms. Lewis and her students. When anybody sees her, we appreciate the hospitality today.
Ms. Taylor?
I congratulate all my peers on athletic success, club success. So that's pretty much it. I just congratulate my peers and they're proud of them.
Thank you. Does someone see if there anyone signed up for public comment or staff or student comment? No one signed up. Okay.
Madam Chair, I think Mr. Robinson from transportation was here this evening.
Come on down, Mr. Robinson. Come on down.
There you go.
Excuse me, just one, Mr. Tay... I'm sorry. Mr. Taylor has to read the words right away.
One, identify yourself by name and 911 address. Two, speakers are limited to three minutes. Three, individuals may reserve or transfer their time to another speaker. Four, specific personnel matters must not be initiated at a public meeting. Five, speakers cannot be abusive, threatening, or use profanity. Six, specify the nature of your remarks. Seven, speakers who have previously spoken on a subject in public comment should not be allowed to readdress the floor during the same public comment period. Eight, specific questions should not be resolved, excuse me, specific questions should be resolved prior to the meeting by contacting the superintendent or their appropriate staff member. Nine, anyone who would like to present a PowerPoint presentation or public comment has to present the presentation 24 hours in advance of a review by the staff or appropriate units. And 10, all questions shall be directed to the chair who at her discretion solicits a response from the appropriate staff member.
You're done.
John Robinson, 2357, the Bureau of Work and Circle Green Bush began. That's a very good presentation tonight. Some things I wanted to say, I'm going to probably say at the next meeting because everything's on a high night here is good. But just to give you some insight, back in November, we found this stuff out of hand or bust out. We're not paid properly because there time served and experience was not properly put into the system. And this information was turned in to you guys. This is going on four months and we haven't heard anything about what's happening with this. You know, the best thing any employer can do is, if their employees have a problem, especially money problems, is to take care of it. Because if the employee owes the company money, they don't waste time trying to get their money back. So we need to do the same thing to the employee. If you owe him money or her money, we need to figure out what to do and go ahead and do it. I don't think it should take four months to solve a simple problem that somebody may have mistaken. Thank you.
Mr. Robinson, are you speaking on the, you're speaking on behalf of others or yourself?
That's a handful of us.
A handful, okay. Okay, I'm going to ask that Mr. Johnson, our HR director, if this only gets to look through payroll and follow up with.
Yeah, I know the information was turned in back in November. So I know it should have, some money should have in there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The board will now adjourn to close meeting.
Madam Chair, I view that the school board convening a close meeting for the purpose of eleven personnel matters as permitted under subdivision 8.1 of subsection 2.2 that's 3711 of the Code of Virginia consisting of the following. Professional appointments, part-time appointments, long-term substitutes, professional reservations, professional retirement, classified targets, part-time reservations, employee separation, attractive renovations, status changes, and substitute appointments. Also, one personnel matter is permitted under subdivision 8.1 of subsection 2.2 that's 3711 in the Code of Virginia for hiring of adherent officers.
Second, thank you. Second, mention of second to go into closed session. All in favor?
Aye.
We're now in closed session.